And I call this March 4th meeting of that Mau County School Board to order. We will have a moment of silence. Thank you. And because of the pandemic, we must read this statement into our meetings, into the minutes of the meeting. The minutes of this meeting should reflect that this meeting is being held electronically pursuant to Virginia State Law and Alamo County ordinance, because the COVID-19 pandemic makes it impracticable and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. The meeting is being communicated to the public electronically through Zoom and streamed live on the Alamo County Public Schools website. And public comment may be offered through the Zoom waiting room feature in accordance with the school board's protocol or by written submission. The introduction of our board members, Dr. Kate Acuff.
Kate Acuff, Jack Jewett District.
Mr. John O'Caro.
John O'Caro at large.
Ms. Katrina Carlson.
Katrina Carlson, Rye District.
Ms. Judy Lee.
Judy Lee, Ryvanna District.
Mr. Dave Ober.
Dave Ober, Whitehall Magisterial District.
Ms. Ellen Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Okay, I'm Graham Page, Samuel Miller District, and Mr. Angel Pelkey.
Angel Pelkey, Student Representative.
Okay, thank you. Everyone is here and accounted for. Mr. Pelkey, maybe we'll let you read or introduce the, um, were you planning on doing that tonight or is that at a later?
I was told it was moved to next meeting.
We scheduled that for March 11th.
Okay, all right, thank you. I said correct.
Okay.
All right, moving on to, um, this is especially, uh, the public comment tonight is especially in, uh, reference to our budget meeting or budget, uh, proposed budget. So, um, this is a public hearing for the proposed budget. And Ms. Carlson, as usual, will preside over the public comment.
Thank you. I'm going to start by reading the public comment guidelines. We only have one speaker signed up. So the school board invites and actively seeks the public's input in the matters relevant to school board governments and provides for time during its business meetings to hear from Alamo County residents and community members. As authorized by ordinance of the county of Alamo, the school board will hold its meetings electronically during the pandemic. The school board is nevertheless committed to encouraging public comment despite its need to meet on a virtual basis. For this reason, there will be two ways for the public to provide comment. First, as always, written comments may be submitted to the school board prior to the start of the meeting and will be given to all the school board members for review. Um, and as long as the school board members, school board continues to hold its meetings electronically, members of the public wishing to provide public comment during the meeting may sign up online by 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. Um, speakers will have three minutes to speak. They will be notified when they reach a two-minute mark. I'll hold up a finger indicating a woman at left. And then I will let you know when the three minutes are up. Speakers during the meeting or those submitting written comments should state their name and address our magisterial district. And speakers should limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governments or the operations of the school division. Last, although the school board will not respond to comments made during the public comment period, school board members may address comments at the end of the meeting agenda under other business. We have one speaker and that is Ray Ovale. I don't know if I see him or her on here.
Hi, good evening. I'm under my wife's screen name. I apologize.
Oh.
I'm Ray Ovale.
Great, you can go ahead and start when you're ready.
Is this a time to ask for a little bit more time by chance?
No, I, well, I don't know the, the procedure for that. I think it's three minutes though.
Okay.
In the future, if you ask in advance, we can see what we can do, but I think.
I apologize. So my name is Ray, good evening, Dr. Haas, members of the school board. My name is Ray Ovale. Address is 3518 Shelby Road. I'm here tonight to request that you consider giving all the classified staff a 5% wage increase. As mentioned in the budget request, we did not get a raise last year. Repreciative of the 2% increase that you're recommending. However, we needed to factor in cost of living increase and the importance of what we do for Alamo County schools. I'd like to highlight some of the classified staff who support education of children and worked in the buildings throughout the year. I'm going to begin with building services, which is composed of HVAC plumbing, electrical, carpentry, energy management, security, fire alarms, grounds, air quality and custodians. You're typically the first department called for building needs. We're considered a certain essential personnel who maintain the air quality for students, provides no removable services, monitor alarm systems and clean and sanitize buildings. All these services allow students to be safe, healthy and in school regularly so learning can be maximized. Next, I'll address administrative assistants who are at a greater risk for various reasons. Each day they ensure visitors follow the COVID-19 check-ins so students can stay healthy and attend school. They monitor who enters the buildings and make sure that, uh, act as the first line of defense against an intruder. They also make sure students leave with the appropriate person when early dismissal comes. They play an integral part in keeping our children safe. School nurses have been crucial this year. The responsibilities have increased significantly. They check temperatures as students enter the building, oversee sanitation sta- stations, and, uh, keep in close communication with various health officials. They've also been supporting vaccine clinics and they're required to have an LPN license as well CPR certification. Food services and bus drivers have also worked collaboratively together getting meals to our families. We all know that safety and nutrition are basically needs that need to be met and enhance the wellbeing of our students. Food services personnel and bus drivers have made that possible. One minute left. Thanks. We can't forget the IT department who has been critical to the infrastructure of schools. They have provided a seamless connection for teachers to work with students virtually. They have a group of help desk, help desk personnel eager to solve computer issues. This has certainly been an unprecedented year where technology has been crucial part of learning. Teachers aides like food services personnel have been working since beginning of COVID-19. Students are considered part of a vulnerable part, population have received in-person instruction. Teachers aides have been daily, here daily to support their education regardless of the risk. As stated previously, we, you recommend a 2% increase is nice and may help with the retention of staff currently. However, an equal raise of 5% would not only help with the cost of living increase, but more importantly be help with moral, moral pride and unity of all classes of my staff.
Mr. Ovale, that's into your time. However, I will say, if you have written comments, please feel free to email those to us so that we can finish, uh, reading what you wanted to say.
Very well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Um, according to our agenda, we have a break scheduled, but since we just started about what 12, 13 minutes ago at most, do I have any opposition if we move forward to, uh, session three of the, um, work session? Any opposition?
Yeah.
Oh. No opposition, but can I just do one point of order?
Yes.
And that is, um, I move that we approve the agenda.
Thank you very much. Thank you very, very much. Okay. All right, it's been moved by Mr. Al Caro that we approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Ms. Lee. Ms. Johnston, please call the role on this.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Lee? Yes. Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Al Caro?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Al Caro, for calling that to my attention. We will now move to our budget development work session. Ms. Schmidt and Ms. Kumazawa, our presenters, I think, for tonight.
All right. Good evening, school board members. I'm Ayek Kumazawa, Director of Budget and Planning. I'm here to facilitate this evening's work session number three. Thankfully, you won't hear too much from me this evening, but I will provide an introduction and close up at the end. This is the third of a series of three work sessions focused on special topics in our funding request. We're happy to continue receiving written questions after tonight and throughout the continuing budget process in April and May. Our agenda for this evening is as follows. Mr. Kevin Curse will present the student safety coaches proposal, followed by Dr. Bernard Hairston's presentation on the equity expansion. You'll see in both of their presentations and adherence to a logic model that we've established in order to ensure timely implementation of the proposals, monitor our activities and provide a means to ensure, to measure results and impacts of these new programs. These metrics aren't set in stone, but rather serve as guidelines for moving the proposals forward. As you'll see, the metrics are continually being refined in the same way that our proposals are continuously being improved. After the proposal presentations, I'll review some of our one-time expenditures for fiscal year '22. And then finally, I will provide a summary of our revisions since the draft funding request was presented, including an adjustment to the K-Tech transfer. And with that, I will turn things over to Mr. Curse.
Good evening. I am Kevin Curse, your Executive Director of Special Education and Student Services. The first thing I want to point out is a discrepancy in the title for you. Because what you may have expected to see was school safety specialist. And, um, really it was, uh, admittedly an 11th hour change, but, uh, with all the work that we've been doing on this proposal, I think you'll find, uh, the division's decision to change the title to student safety coach really reflects the direction of this proposal much more, I think, accurately than, um, the, the previous title. So if you bear with me and allow me to share some of the, uh, goals and, uh, other information, I think you'll, I'll bear my point out. So the goals of the student safety coach proposal is to improve school climate and reform school discipline, while continuing to build upon and improve, uh, our safe and secure educational environments across the division. We're going to do this through a really, um, concentrated focus on mental health, de-escalation and restorative justice through this proposal, while maintaining the safety and security of students, school staff and our property. Uh, this proposal, I think, fits quite well with the objectives of our strategic plan. It helps advance that plan by addressing, uh, the objectives of engaging every student, improving opportunity and achievement, and optimizing our resources. The strategic priority of these eight full-time equivalent positions as part of this proposal directly addresses the identification and removal of practices that perpetuate the achievement gap. I'd like to review the essential responsibilities of the student safety coaches. And the first is paramount. It, it is there and the biggest because I do believe it feeds into all the others. So just want to take a, just a few extra seconds on that. And that is the student safety coaches are going to provide a safe and secure environment for student staff and guests through the building of relationships with the stakeholders that they serve. They're going to establish themselves as part of our school culture by being an active and front-facing change agent through caring and problem solving with the staff and the kids that they serve. They will be, be active in ensuring that the perspective of mental health, equity and restorative justice is infused into their interactions with those around them. Additional responsibilities, again, that will, that will just be infused in all of the other areas will include them serving on intervention teams. Two of note are the, our school-based intervention teams and threat assessment teams, but there are others. They will support our school division efforts, uh, not just in a prevention capacity, but also when it does occur with regard to school truancy. They'll conduct assist administration in conducting investigations, but we did want to point out specifically, they will assist the division as well in implementing Title IX investigations, which really does look at sexual and gender discrimination and harassment. The fifth responsibility will be facilitating inspections, inspections of our campus to ensure compliance with safety and security codes, participating in monthly school safety meetings and assisting staff, police and emergency personnel, not just in handling crisis situations, but in planning for them, right? So doing that prevention work, that prevention work as well. Our next slide, I'm going to review, um, the inputs that specifically we are looking to address before our next school year, before next school year begins. Our goal is to finalize a job description, publish an organizational chart that clearly delineates how the student safety coaches fit within our system, determine a physical placement, a plan for the allocation of the staffing and resources across the division, publish an operational handbook, not just for the student safety coaches, but for administration and our community so that it's very transparent as to exactly what the role of our student safety coaches in our buildings is, is about. All the positions would be screened for, interviewed and candidates hired before the beginning of the school year. And to note that required professional development that we're going to make required by Alamo County Public Schools would be completed before the first day of school. Those are the inputs we want to highlight. On the activity side of things, um, and really to drill down a little bit more on the preparation of the individuals that would become student safety coaches would be certification by the Department of Criminal Justice Services as school security officers, really to enhance that perspective on the security side of security and safety. They would also be required to complete a number of topics in training here in Alamo County Public Schools, which includes, but is not limited to trauma-informed and culturally responsive student interactions, mental health first aid, in addition to basic traditional first aid, and then training in school safety measures, crisis intervention and de-escalation techniques and skills. We also are going to support training in conducting Title IX investigations and for the individuals that are student safety coaches, for them to be active participants in our threat assessment process. Our outputs, what we expect to happen is 100% of our state and locally required school safety and security reviews, audits and inspections will not only be done on time, but will be done successfully through their support, that the student safety coaches will participate in monthly safety meetings with each administrative team at the schools. They would continue their professional learning on an ongoing basis by participating and working collaboratively with the coordinator of mental health and wellness. And then they will also be participating at a larger level in the division with our school seat safety liaisons at each of the schools. And I do want to highlight that this, we would be, um, expecting, uh, community participation as well by the Alamo County Police Department in the focus of planning for, executing and receiving feedback on our drills and procedures to ensure that security and safety of our staff and students. On the outcome side of things, we're looking to develop a specific internal survey of our school administrators, faculty and students specifically about this proposal to get their perceptions of safety and security on our campuses. We would then also assess the accomplishment of tasks that were, um, delineated by the Director of Student Services and the principals. And then lastly, our sparkles would be determined by the success of a three-year trend on data on school climate by both staff and students, particularly looking at their feelings of safety and security while at school. In summary, this proposal is, uh, looking at eight full-time equivalent positions of these student safety coaches with operational budgets, you could see of $15,000, a total budget of a little over $550,000. That would include new funding required to make this work of over $286,000. There are, I would be more than happy to entertain any questions, comments or concerns.
I had a question. Who are the school safety liaisons?
Yes, each, each school building, we ask the principal to designate who they would like to be the point of contact for school safety. I will say that the majority are either the principals themselves or a designated assistant principal.
I have a question, um, Mr. Curse. How will they be deployed? I mean, before we had five SROs and now we have eight safety coaches. So they each have a portfolio of schools or how will that work?
Yes, so right now I don't, we, we are, we haven't developed that plan yet. But I could say that at least we have, um, right up perception in, in our mind of how it will, could possibly look just by being reasonable. And that would be that each of the, um, student safety coaches would be anchored to a secondary school. At least that's the kind of foregone conclusion and then we'll refine that. But that's the idea, they'd be anchored to a secondary school, right? With eight, our three medals, five, uh, five medals, three high schools. And then from there, sort of take on geographically, the elementary and including the charter schools, right? Under their wing for full coverage, but the specifics we're going to work out as part of our, uh, our inputs. I believe it was under our inputs.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are there other questions on the safety specialist? Mr. Curse, you were saying about the, the eight and using the, the three high schools and the five middle schools. How does, um, the soon-to-be erstwhile Murray High School, uh, you know, using the erstwhile part being the name, how do they fit into that?
So that, that's a great question. I think it's going to be part of the comprehensive plan. Again, not having the specifics yet, uh, I, I could, I, I really couldn't say other than it's going to be a geographical net. So in the past, for other coverages, we have looked at geographical locations like with Burley, for example, right? It's right across the street. So that might be one of the things that are put on the table of how could we pull in the support of the charter school, the charter campus? But, uh, again, not having the specifics just yet, I could see that being, uh, very reasonable to consider.
Are there other questions from any board members? Just one more quick comment, and, and that is that I appreciate, uh, the questions, uh, the answers to the questions that were put in, uh, in the, in the last few days, because I was concerned in seeing that the objectives were to get a lot of the things in place by the end of the year. And then, uh, in, in, in kind of fleshing this out, and maybe Mr. Curse, you wrote this, but it was, uh, it was good to know that these coaches will be in place for the opening of the school year and the training would hopefully take place over the summer as opposed to into next year. So thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Curse.
Sure. And if I could imparting, thank everybody. Uh, I just want to note, um, Chris Ruth, uh, Coordinator of, uh, s- school safety, I want to say, uh, it was instrumental, honestly. 11th hour hard work and helped me put all this together. So it was not a solo, including the superintendent's cabinet. But I, I just wanted to thank folks for all their support in putting this proposal together. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, and thank you for all of your hard work on, um, this endeavor. Okay, Ms. Kumazawa?
The next piece will be presented by Dr. Bernard Hairston.
Thank you. You can move to the next slide as I say good evening to Dr. Haas and the school board. And thank you in advance for your ongoing support of the division's equity, diversity, inclusion as well, anti-racism priorities, um, in the school division. What I'd like to do is start with, uh, these four bullet points that will offer a summary of the equity expansion proposal. First, the expansion of the culturally responsive teaching professional development plan and certification model is necessary to address the projected demand for services to support the transfer to practice evidence-based model that we have designed. Second, to provide oversight and implementation of the anti-racism policy and other equity regulations involving ongoing reviews and updates. This requires curriculum development and training from an equity and an anti-racism lens. Third, we are very happy to announce that all contracts of new hires effective 2021 will require culturally responsive teaching training and they must meet the micro credential or certification requirements within three years to maintain continuous contract status. This will certainly have an impact on the culture of Alamo County Public Schools. And fourth, the inclusion of an equity and anti-racism framework will help address a systemic transformation of racial and equity achievement disparities. This will allow for a concentrated focus on identifying as well changing division philosophies, division policies, programs and practices recognized as barriers. Next slide. We believe this equity proposal, as a part of requesting the three FTEs to expand the equity specialist team from three to six staff members will address four of the five division objectives and the three strategic priorities while advancing the division's strategic plan. We believe this request is specific to training all staff, to engage every student by placing value on their social and cultural experiences as relevant to how and what they teach. This approach centers on strengthening, strengthening the student, the family and community partnerships. We believe the re- results produce a best practice to identify and develop students' interests in understanding the value of teaching to the whole child. We also believe this will naturally reduce opportunity and achievement gaps, which will opti- optimize resources while maximizing the tier-one teaching and learning process. You might call that avoiding an, an achievement gap. Next slide, please. Now, um, this slide will help us understand the focus, our focus over the past 12 years. I will speak to these reference points from the bottom left of the slide to the top when you see the anti-racism orientation. In 1999, Alamo County Public Schools was one of the first school divisions in the state to staff a diversity coordinator and allotted stipends to diversity resource teachers in each school to lead courageous conversations about equity and inclusion. In 2008, a res- In 2008, a resource utilization study recommended a downsizing of central office staff positions. The, unfortunately, the diverse, or fortunately, the diversity coordinator position was eliminated. Um, rather than discontinuing this critical work, the focus shifted from courageous conversations, and that's the fortunate part, to culturally responsive teaching to address one of the three goals of eliminating achievement gaps. Now, from a historical perspective, the culturally responsive teaching model evolved from the research of Geneva Gay's book, Culturally Responsive Teaching: Theory, Research, and Practice, Bonnie Davis's work of How to Teach Students Who Don't Look Like You, and the research of Zaretta Hammond, Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain. Now, in 2009, the work was field-tested with MQ, which stands for Math Men Mission. And this program was offered through a summer academy, a community partnership initiative with the 100 Black men of Central Virginia to prepare African-American male middle school students to enroll and complete Algebra I by grade eight. There were only two African-American males enrolled in the seventh grade and eighth grade algebra classes offered in the five middle schools in that year. MQ teachers were hired and retrained to teach to and through the culture of the students enrolled. Parents' participation was a required partnership. Learning occurred naturally through a culturally relevant and collectivist approach centered on the student, not on the teacher. High expectations were modeled by framing the student as scholars of brilliance and taught at Bloom's Taxonomy's highest levels. Subsequently, the National School Boards Association recognized Abulmore County Public Schools in 2011 and 2013 with the Magna Award for Innovative Best Practices for Closing Achievement Yes. In 2015, the culturally responsive teaching model introduced an assessment tool to validate the relationship of CRT curriculum design, professional development training, and personalized follow-up coaching. This assessment involves the submission of a maximum of a 10-page portfolio that documents the evidence of teacher and student growth over the course of a school year. Each candidate presents their evidence to a team, generally four or five staff members, who are assessors to validate the impact on student achievement. This process requires intensive staff time personalized to each candidate simply because every student is different. Now, between 2015 and 2018, the organizational structure expanded to include an equity leadership team, school-based equity teams in each school, and you, the school board, approved two, two equity specialist positions and the CRT micro credential was introduced. Between 2016 and 2018, about 500 staff were trained in the three culturally responsive teaching modules, of which 17 educators received certification and 13 completed the micro credential. Now, in 2019, um, you approved staffing for a third equity specialist honoring our growth. At the same time, the anti-racism policy was adopted and the Anti-Racism Steering Committee was created to implement the 22 regulations of the policy. That same year, the equity team facilitated multiple community conversations as directed by you, the school board. This work has expanded this year to rolling out an unprecedented challenge of deinstitutionalized racism. All staff are engaged in the courageous conversation about race book study and the orientation training on the anti-racism policy. This slide truly represents a progressive school division, and I thank you as visionary leaders. Next slide, please. Now, this graph represents a snapshot of services offered since 2015, 16 school year, and projections through 2024 to understand the increasing demand for services. The light blue dotted line illustrates the professional development training growth from 2015 to 2024. For example, in 2016, there were 12 educators to receive the required training on the three characteristics or the modules of culturally responsive teaching. Now, this peaked to about 170 in 2019 and will exceed a modest projection of 300 by 2023. Now, the orange line tracks the number of educators who completed the CRT micro credential since its introduction in 2017. We are projecting growth from the original 13 in 2017 to close to 288 candidates by 2023. The purple line tracks the number of educators who completed the CRT certification since its introduction in 2015, 2016. For example, there were 12 educators to experience the modular training throughout the year. Four of the 12 completed the process and received the certification. Now, we are projecting growth from the original four in 2015 to close to 160 candidates, by 20, 61 candidates by 2023. Keep in mind, the equity team must be prepared to coach and assess about 449 candidates engaged in the micro credential and certification by 2023. Now, we want you to focus your attention on far right-hand side of the slide. These items represent three of the many impactful unplanned, unplanned spin-off initiatives that occur because of things such as a new policy or policy revision, or directives from the school board or our superintendent, or a strategic plan initiative. These initiatives, these new initiatives always require planning, follow-up action steps, and accountability oversight to receive those long-term outcomes. So in August, for example, as per a directive, I think from, uh, the school board, the equity team led 1,249 staff members through multiple community conversations to assist with understanding the division's goal around equity, access, and the equity mission statement. Staff were introduced to achievement gap data and a historical perspective of race relations in Abulmore County Public Schools. The, uh, comments received were overwhelmingly positive. In the 2020, 21 school year, 1,366 staff members have participated in one or more courageous conversations about, um, book study discussions. Equity specialists have planned and facilitated monthly leadership team meetings, school-based faculty meetings have occurred, and monthly feeder pattern courageous conversation forums have also occurred. And also to date, 837 staff members this year have completed the anti-racism orientation training and verificating, completed the verification form. Here's a good example of the work that's taking place and how impressed we are with how staff members have embraced this work. Last Friday, from 7:00 AM to 8:30 AM, Mr. Jim Foley, the, the director of transportation and his leadership team facilitated a virtual training session for 188 participants. Mr. Foley's team worked with the equity team over several months to prepare, and they are now working on smaller group follow-up training sessions. Next slide, please. Now, here are examples of inputs um, that will, and activities, uh, that will require immediate attention. By June 2021, the following deliverables will be completed for establishing the planning foundation. We will formulate an operational plan to address the expansion of staff responsibilities with a focus on building a team of culturally and racially equity leaders. We will review the current equity specialist job description, advertise the position, if approved, interview and hire as soon as possible, and begin training the newly hired equity specialists. Also, by August 2021, the following deliverables will be completed to demonstrate the proposal in progress. We will examine the current state utilization of resources targeted to daily operational demands. This process actually began in November 2020 by considering requests for services and the resources we manage well. One thing we determined is that our biggest resource is our social capital or the staff members in the school division who support this work because they believe in the work. We will collaborate with the Human Resources Department to establish structures that require all new hires to receive professional development training and a micro credential or certification within three years. We will also coordinate with the committee tasked to review the teacher and administrative performance appraisal plans to ensure culturally responsive teaching practices are embedded. Next slide, please. Let's look at the outputs and the outcomes. And, uh, the following short-term goals, um, will demonstrate successful implementation of the proposal. Participation in micro credentialing and certification will increase by 70% in 2021, 22. Successful participants will be recognized and celebrated at the annual diversity conference and receive stipends of $500 for the micro credential and $1,000 for the certification. Principals will establish equity dashboards specific to their school data to be aligned with their school improvement plans and performance goals. Principals will have, will have acquired skills for goal-setting strategies and tracking achievement data based on gradual increases of staff completing the culturally responsive teaching requirements. Now, I encourage each of you to click on this link to review the number of educators who have completed the micro credential or certification criteria by schools. Uh, and as you look at, uh, this, this spreadsheet, this reporting of data, you'll notice that only 8.7% of our teachers have completed the process. And so this is a good indicator that we're not going to see, see significant changes in individual schools or the school division until we reach that, let's say approximately 40% threshold or higher with people, um, being certified or receiving a certification. So if you look at that, that tracking, you'll see school by school, and you see that we have a lot of work to do, but it is doable. Now, if we look at, um, the outcomes, by the end, by the end of 2022 school year, structures being, will be in place to institutionalize culturally responsive teaching as an expectation for all staff to participate. That means all new teachers as well, um, experienced teachers. By the end of 2023, 24 academic school year, schools will begin to see gradual, a gradual impact on student achievement growth data. At least 35% of the staff in the divisions, school division, should have completed a validation or a, um, um, a validation, to be validated by either a micro credential or certification of, by that timeframe. Next slide, please. In summary, the three equity specialists are currently involved in policy reviews, program evaluation oversight, equity audits, talent development, demographic surveys, community outreach initiatives, grading practices, LGBT policy development, portrait of a learner, design team, COVID recovery steering committee, the Human Resources Departmental Assessment Team, the Equity Advisory Committee, the Anti-Racism Steering Committee, school-based equity teams, liaisons to departmental departments, and each serves as liaisons to eight or more schools. Currently, they are offering 7:30 AM, 4:45 and 6:00 PM training sessions and offering personalized coaching to the 141 staff members who are exploring the certification or micro credential assessment this year. So I thank you for considering this request for these three new positions. And as you can see, we are requesting $353,675. I'm here to welcome any comments and/or questions.
Dr. Hairston, I just want to say that I think you're a rock star and I am very, very grateful that you're working with us.
My mama would appreciate that comment.
I would echo what Mr. Oberg said, Dr. Hairston. A couple of questions. When you say all new hires will be required to participate in micro credentialing or CRT, are we talking all new teacher hires, regular classroom teachers, returning teachers aides? How expansive is that group and does it include school principals?
Um, any person who has a direct responsibility um, for, um, educating our students, primarily teachers and administrators, not teacher assistants because they're classified, will be required. So if you're guidance counselor, if you're principal, if you're a classroom teacher, you will be required to go through this process.
And I'm assuming.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just finished a, a book study group with Alani Keys and others that included the book by Kalafi uh, on, on culturally responsive school leadership. So I think it is critical to encourage our principals to participate in this as well.
I think that's very important, um, to this work, to the progress of this work, to have our building-level administrators on board, and those numbers are growing, um, yearly.
Other questions from other board members?
Dr. Hairston, a question along those same lines with the new, uh, teachers, principals, administrators, uh, being required to complete it, uh, either the micro credentialing or the certification. What is the timeframe in which they, they must complete it? Is it a couple of years? Is it three years? Is it, how many years is that?
So in order to receive tenure or continuous, uh, contract status with the school division, uh, you are eligible after your third year. So, um, if you are being hired as an educator in Abulmore County Public Schools this year, you will get a notification that, uh, as part of signing your contract, uh, you will be required to complete this process. And if you don't, you will be required to complete this process, and if you don't, then your contract will not continue.
Thank you.
Dr. Harrison, what about what about?
So you have three years to get it done.
Got it.
What about teachers who have who come in with, they already have continuing contract elsewhere? They come in, they then they have one year to get continuing contract. What are we going to do with them?
So it still suggests that they have, they're signing a contract which suggests that they have three years to get it done.
Can we legally require that? I think we just need to look at that. I'm not sure that we can make it because I think that I would I would ask the council, look at that.
We we brought our legal advisor in on this process. That was not a red flag, but that specific question was not asked, but we will revisit it. Thank you, sir.
Dr. Harrison, I I wanted to echo what everyone else has said. I have a question about the school equity dashboards. I know that we've talked about those on the board in the past, and I think that they can be a very powerful tool as measuring, you know, if you don't measure it, then you can't change it. Butchering that, but you understand what I'm saying. So what is the timeline for those?
Um, I will be working with Dr. McLaughlin as a part of his role in strategic planning. We hope to have that in place by the end of the year where there is a clear expectation that the equity dashboards will be personalized by the principals for for data related to each school in the division. This is really critical in terms of of establishing baseline data, and we're talking about baseline data twenty twenty-one. And you move from that baseline data in terms of setting goals to shift the data based on some very strategic plans that you have relative to our equity and anti-racism work that's occurring in the school division. And 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 that truly involves ensuring that teachers are properly trained and culturally responsive teaching as well, have an understanding of how racism impacts the relationship between of the school and the home and the student.
So you mean the end of this school year or the end of?
In the end of this school year.
Okay. And so is there? I know at various times there's been a district-wide equity dashboard that I I think in some redesigns of the website has moved different places. Is that still available to us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great.
It's the the last one was produced in, I think, two thousand and nineteen because we have not received updated standards of learning data because of COVID.
Okay, and will the school-based dashboards also be public?
I have not entertained that that question. I don't know why it wouldn't be, but that's a question to be discussed. Why would we not make any of our data public?
Anyway, I agree. Okay, thank you very much.
No, I would add, Dr. Harrison, first of all, thanks. This I've really enjoyed your presentation. And I want to say that one of the things Dr. Harrison and I talked about, there's a pivotal thing that takes place every year in this with the schools in the fall. When they first come back, they do something called it State of the School Address to the community. And our our goal is to have their their school dashboards ready for that public presentation. So not only is it a static, I guess, figure or table that would reside publicly from their school webpage, but also they would have that opportunity to share it with their community and, you know, explain what the plans are to keep improving that data. Thank you.
Great, I'm really, I'm very heartened to hear about that.
Dr. Harrison, the the slide that had the the colored curves to it, I think one was orange, one was purplish and and one was the light dotted.
Yeah, yeah, it was a blue color.
Yeah, and so the the light blood dotted blue, you may have answered this, but I just wanted to confirm that that got up into the four hundred plus range and by twenty twenty-four. And so let's just round it to five hundred because I I'm not sure how much further it was over the four hundred. Is that the cumulative number of people who would have participated in CRT? Or is that line made up of the the cumulative numbers going up for each year? So that you're anticipating in some later years, two hundred participating? Um, let's see. Because I think you you may have said that you were expecting to be at four hundred and some odd teachers who would have participated, but I just wanted to confirm that.
So with that, this is what I I talked about. By twenty twenty-three, we project about three hundred teachers to participate in the professional development training of going through the modulus for modular training for culturally responsive teaching.
Okay, so that's the cumulative number at that point. Okay, great.
Yes.
And I had one other question.
For 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 that year, for that year. It's going to gradually increase year by year for that year.
Okay, so it's just for the year. It's not cumulative.
Yes, 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 yes. So for for example, this year, we're looking at a hundred, about a hundred and fifty people who are going through the training. Next year, we're looking at about two hundred. We have projected like a twenty-five percent increase.
Which is why that curve goes up at the angle that it does. So do you then have a projected number of teachers? Just I'm just using teachers as the example, who would cumulatively, you know, out of the fourteen hundred teachers, who would have cumulatively gone through it by twenty-three, twenty-four?
Uh, so, yes, sir. So by in twenty in twenty twenty, we had a cumulative, we had a cumulative of of, let me do some quick math here. We had sixty-two people to go through the process in for micro credential or certification in twenty twenty. So 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 what are you looking at? By what year would you want that cumulative?
You know, I I don't remember the slide exactly, but I thought it went through twenty twenty-four. And I was just trying to to understand.
So by but by twenty, let's say, for example, by twenty twenty-one, we project a hundred and five people to go through either a micro credential or certification. The following year, we project two hundred and thirty-four folks to go through the micro credential or certification. And by twenty twenty-three, we hope to process about four hundred and forty-nine. I think that's the figure that you heard me say. And that would be about two hundred and eighty-eight going through the micro credential and approximately a hundred and sixty-one going through the certification. That's a lot of people to process.
Yep, yep.
Okay, that's why we need the additional support. But we also need to look at a lot of restructuring to make it happen. So for example, um, we are looking at training whole schools, starting with our small schools. And so let's say, for example, you have a school with thirteen teachers. We can coordinate with the principal and run all of those teachers through a year-long training. And that's what we're going to start seeing. When we get high percentages of teachers in a school certified, that's when we're going to see the impact on student achievement. A student will go to a teacher in the first grade who's been culturally responsive, trained second grade, third grade, and we're going to get the impact. So we're we're considering focusing training on those small schools or and or focusing training on those schools where administrators have gone through the process, and they understand and embrace the work. And we get the results from those schools. Everybody else is going to be lining up like they're trying to get a COVID shot.
Last question. Thank you very much for that. That's a great explanation. Is for your equity specialists, the three the FTEs, what's where are you going to be looking for them? Will they be coming, do you think, internally? And 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 whether they're internal or external, who would be your ideal candidate?
An ideal candidate would be someone who's already going through the certification of micro credential process. The job description says that you must have a thorough understanding of the Alamo County Public Schools culturally responsive teaching model. You must have because ours is personalized to who we are. You're going to have to be awful strong to come from the outside to be eligible to be a part of this 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 team, this program, but it could happen.
Thank you for all the outstanding work, Dr. Harrison.
Yes, sir.
You and to your team.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Harrison? Okay, Dr. Harrison, I want to join. Put off it had been said, and first, thank you for spearheading our equity program. You've done a tremendous job in that position. And also the goals, I'm really glad that they are smart goals that we have timeline to be able to assess them by. And also at Red Hill, it was last week, and I meant to mention this then, but there was a workshop for the Hill by the Parents that highlighted the anti-racism work that had been done at Red Hill to date, and also the Black History Program that they had presented at the school. So one of your equity specialists was there. So it was just great work seeing what had been done out at Red Hill. So again, thank you so much for your work as our equity specialist. You've done an outstanding job.
That the principal at Red Hill is out front, leading the work and making a difference. She's part of a group facilitating Southern feeder pattern sessions. She actually initiated a book study with her staff back in August before we kicked it out as a division. That's the kind of leadership that we that we're looking for. She is.
Right, and in addition to her, to Ms. McCollum, also, she should have brought the names of the specialists or at least one of this two staff members that had spearheaded the effort too. So it was three people that had really sought a spearhead at everything that was happening out at Red Hill.
Ayana Mitchell.
Yeah.
Was one. And maybe Alfred Tool, a second one.
Okay.
And I can't think of the third one.
Right, okay. All right, thank you very much for your presentation.
I wasn't going to say anything, but now I feel like I have to real quick. I just want to say, because I was going to type it, and I'm like, why would I type it in? And I could just say, thank you, Dr. Harrison. I think you're doing a fantastic job. I just I want to say that out loud as well. I think your presentation is a culmination of a lot of work and a lot of years and a lot of effort, and I love I love the direction that it's going. So thank you for staying on it.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you, Dr. Harrison. All right, Ms. Kumazawa, you're back on in the spotlight again.
Great. Thank you. Next, I'll just spend a few minutes reviewing our proposed one-time expenditures planned for FY twenty-two. You may remember this slide from previous presentations about our revenues. And I want to focus your attention to our FY twenty-one, our current year state revenues. At this time last year, you approved a state revenue projection of fifty-seven point eight million dollars. But by the time we adopted our budget a few months later, that projection dropped to fifty-two point eight million dollars in response to the economic uncertainty we are experiencing at that time. That was the amount we adopted. At the same time, we reduced our expenditures to match this potential revenue loss. Now we know that we'll be receiving a full fifty-seven point nine million dollars from the state in the current year. It's approximately level to what we were originally anticipating. The expenditure savings that we're realizing in the current year will add to our fund balance. A different way to look at this is the table shown here. We're projecting a five point one million dollars in state revenues higher than what we adopted and planned for. This will fall to our fund balance, and we propose using four point one million dollars of our fund balance during fiscal year twenty-two. Here's the list of our proposed one-time expenditures. They're listed here with their budget amounts as well as the page numbers in the funding request document for your reference. In addition, you can see how many of these align with our strategic plan objectives. This evening, I'll provide a quick overview of the top three as they represent programmatic shifts in the next year. This is a program that was proposed last year to provide a one thousand dollar one-time incentive for first-year new hire teachers. The local hiring process has become extremely competitive, and research indicates the need for offering additional financial assistance and incentives to support teachers to transition them into their new careers. This also supports our initiative to increase the number of minority teachers across the division. So we'd like to propose this program again as a pilot in fiscal year twenty-two. Some of the one-time funding will be used for capital expenditure since those are one-time in nature. The lease of a mobile unit at Alabama High School is expiring, and we have the option for purchasing the unit rather than continuing with the annual lease payments. And third, we're dedicating a majority of the one-time funds to learning recovery. As a reminder, this piece will supplement the Federal CARES Act funding that we're also projected on receiving. In total, we've earmarked over eight million dollars in funding dedicated to learning recovery. We also wanted to note that we plan on funding an expanded after-school program with these funds. So next, I will provide you with a quick review of where we are with regards to the original draft funding request. I have one more revision to share with you this evening, and it's related to the K-Tech transfer. And Ms. Stephanie Carter is here if there are any questions. We're projecting an increase in the transfer that we make to K-Tech in FY twenty-two. There are three primary factors involved with this. One is salary increases for staff to match our division's salary increase proposal, the addition of one FTE math instructor, and then finally, an increased proportion of ACP as student enrollment to overall enrollment at K-Tech. So this has been added to the list of expenditure revisions from the FY twenty-two draft funding request. The ones at the top were discussed last week at work session number two. We have added the additional cost for the transfer to K-Tech. We're also proposing to maintain a reserve for the remaining expenditures as we gain more information about our state revenues, and that's incoming over the next several weeks. As they have proposed a different pay strategy, we want to reserve funds to make sure that we are funding our SOQ-funded positions with salary increases that will allow us to pull down the full state funding. And you may also remember there remains a significant portion of operational restoration that we did not fund. We'll be discussing this in the coming months aligned with the timing of when we receive more information about any additional state revenues. So with that, I will stop for questions or comments.
Questions or comments from Ms. Kumazawa?
I don't have one for Ms. Kumazawa, but for Stephanie Carter, I thought she might want to explain the math instructor. I don't know if she's on. Why that's important to add at K-Tech. It's important. Well, it's important to have some core instructors at K-Tech beyond the auto body or culinary arts so they can more easily get all the credits that they need. And we have, I believe, we have English, and there's Ms. Carter.
Hi, I'm sorry, there was, I had to step away for a second. If you tell me the question, I'm happy to answer.
I was, I just asked that you explain to the rest of the board why the math instructor is an important addition to the K-Tech curriculum?
Sure, and and some of what you said is absolutely correct, that the math teacher is important to K-Tech because when we offer core classes, it really allows students to have. to K-Tech because when we offer core classes, it really allows students to have some flexibility in their schedule. When they give up a half-day to be a K-Tech, it's hard to be here for a half-day and not get a core class in. But that's a logistical reason that we wanted. An instructional reason that we really wanted is because we feel like K-Tech offers an opportunity for our students to really understand the relevance of math. I always use the same example, but I'll use this one. When you're building a house, you're using a lot of geometry, and we feel like our students that maybe haven't always understood the real-life application of math will have the opportunity by taking math here and embedded into building trades and electricity, will really be able to see math in action and be able to understand why math is important and how they use it in their real life.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Thank you. I hope I addressed the question.
Ms. Carter, are there other courses, math courses anticipated besides geometry, the algebras, and what would your expectation be?
Geometry will be embedded into building trades, and we will embed physics into electricity. There's a lot of physics are just inherently in the electricity curriculum, as well as AFDA, which is Algebra Functions and Data Analysis, and electricity. So our students that complete our electricity program will get a credit for AFDA and a credit for physics if they complete the two-year program.
Other questions on this aspect of the budget? Any other questions or comments? Okay, Ms. Kuma Zawa, back to you.
Yep, I just have one more slide to orient you to our next steps. Next week, we will bring forward our, what we recommend for the school board to adopt the funding request next Thursday. And then a few days after that, you all will be presenting the funding request at a Board of Supervisors budget work session. And then, as you know, in April, we will be discussing how we will be budgeting for the learning recovery funds in preparation for our budget adoption in May. And as I mentioned, if there are updates along the way, such as more information about state revenues, for example, we will bring that to your attention in the next month. And that's pretty much it for me. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Thank you for the last three weeks of presentations to us. They've all been very enlightening, and you've done a tremendous job. So thanks so much. Do we have any other business from the board or from the superintendent?
I had a few items, but if any board members wanted to go first.
I have a couple of things, Chairman Page. I mentioned last week, I would very much look forward to a review of the Market Basket methodology we use for our teachers. I don't think it's been reviewed in at least a decade, maybe more. We did change it a few years ago to move the target to the top quartile, but I'm concerned whether the school divisions that we're looking at are the right ones. And we, with the methodology that we have, we are chronically behind city schools, which I think is probably our stiffest competition. So I would like, obviously, it would depend upon my colleagues, you all supporting it, but I move that we ask after this budget season, prior to the next budget season, that staff do an evaluation of this methodology.
A second.
To the motion.
Second.
Okay, so moved by Dr. Acuff, second by Ms. Lee, that we ask staff to evaluate our Market Basket methodology and see if we can make needed changes there. Ms. Johnson, is there any discussion on the motion? All right, here, no discussion, Ms. Johnston.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. Motion carries, so staff will undertake that task as proposed by Dr. Acuff.
Chairman Page, I do have another motion, if you entertain it. It also has got my attention in this budget season, but it is not critical for this budget season. It would be something to be done prior to the next budget season. And I'll just read what I have, so I don't get screwed up. As you know, Albemarle County Public Schools provides additional funding based on, to individual schools, based on the percentage of low-income students enrolled. That is, those students who are eligible for free and reduced-cost school lunches. This differentiated funding model was introduced about, I know, three superintendents ago, but about 20 years ago, and I'm not sure it's ever been evaluated as a program. The overarching mission, I think, is to address the achievement gap. But any of us that have looked at the past decade of achievement gaps have seen that we still aren't at where we need to be. So I would like, I mean, because it's also, it's focused only on income and not on the percentage of black or brown students, the number of English language learners, and other demographic variables. And given the sizable investment that we make for differentiated funding, it's a huge investment, I would like to make a motion that we look at this, do a program evaluation of differential, differentiated funding model. Given our high priorities to reduce the achievement gap of race and income and other demographic groups, is this the best model that we can develop? Is it the best tool to address that, those achievement gaps? What is the rate of return on our investment? And if some differentiated funding is warranted, and we do have great variability across our schools, is the income-only model the most robust metric to use? So I would move that the division conduct a program evaluation of our differentiated funding model, including examining other ways the funds might be used, and as needed, engage external resources such as EAP to identify the best practices to address our persistent achievement gap.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All right, moved by Dr. Acuff, second by Ms. Alcaro, that we conduct or have staff to evaluate our differentiated funding model and see if there are better ways of taking that task on. Is that a correct, close enough summary of your?
Much more succinct than I was, Mr. Page.
Okay. Any discussion on Dr. Acuff's motion? All right, Ms. Johnston, roll call, please.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Press.
All right, motion carries.
No more motions.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Acuff, for those two very good motions to enhance our division. So thanks so much. Any other business by school board members? All right, well, before Dr. Haas comes forth, I do have one. As you will recall, we have had probably for the last three or four weeks, each week, a board meeting. And so I would like us to consider canceling the work session for March 25th. We have a closed meeting that's scheduled for the 25th, so we would still have that closed session. But I would like to, for the board, to accept canceling the March 25th work session.
Second.
That wasn't a motion, I can't make a motion, so we need a motion.
I move that we cancel the March 25th work session.
Is there a second? Okay, moved by Mr. Al, well, any discussion on that motion? All right, it's been moved by Mr. Oberg, second by Mr. Alcaro, that we cancel our March 25th work session. Ms. Johnston, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. So I keep saying October, our May 25th work session is canceled, but we will have a closed, March, thank you. But we will have a closed meeting on that date, on March 25th. Is there any other business from board members? All right, Dr. Haas.
Oh, well, thank you, Mr. Page. So that was, that was one of the things I wanted to talk about. So all I can say is, thank you very much for, for bringing that up. Actually, after we talked today, I was, went back and looked, and we've actually had nine board meetings over the last nine weeks.
Right.
And this will really allow our staff, the central office staff, one of the things I'm requiring all of our staff to do over the next couple of weeks is to be out in the schools, more so than ever, and be visible and supportive of staff as they, as the schools are really working hard to make changes and get ready for the increased student and staff coming in. So that will be really, really helpful. Plus, just realizing that we do have the Board of Supervisors presentation coming up, that will help us to really facilitate your presentation along with Ms. Carlson. So I really appreciate you all looking at that, and the central staff can really use our energy to be supportive of the school. So thank you very much to the whole board. The other thing I had was kind of something that really made my eyes pop. You know, annually, we participate in the Golden Apple Awards for teachers, which is a program that's sponsored by Better Living to recognize excellence in teaching in all of the schools in the Charlottesville, Alamo area, that's public and private. And in the past, but last year, for example, we, as a total, for the whole school system, over the whole process, we had 100 nominations for our teachers in our schools. And as of the fourth day, now that was over a seven-week period, as of the fourth day, right now, we've had over 1,000 nominations. The process has changed so that the Nunleys and Better Living, they are doing it through Facebook, which allows obviously for greater participation, also much more equity of participation by our students and families and community members to recognize teachers. The selection committee now is going to have a whole lot more work to do for the Golden Apples, but I really think this is a testament to the value that our community places on our teachers and how special they are to supporting our community. So I just wanted to announce that. I think that was just an amazing, amazing story, and I'm sure it'll, it'll be a headline for some time to come. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Haas. What is that, 1,000 nominations from Alamo County?
Yes.
Wow, okay.
And that's from Phil's chair.
So to be highlighting that we truly have an outstanding staff in our division.
Yes, we do, yes.
Any other business from board members before we adjourn? Okay, if not, this March 4th meeting of the Alamo County School Board is adjourned.
Hi, everybody.